Alright, thank you.
Alright, well, I'm called over for the Borough Council Workshop Meeting for October 4, 2023. Can we do the roll call?
President Parkinson.
Here.
Vice President Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Fagan.
Here.
Councilmember Cresser.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Gerard.
Here.
Borough Manager Snyder.
Here.
Borough Solicitor Harper.
Here.
Um, before we get our meeting started, as many of you guys know, we had a member of our community, Sal, pass away. Um, and he was not only a longtime member of the community, but he was also a member of this council. Um, multiple times. Um, as I know, I started with him recently when he stepped into fill of vacancy. So. Uh, would I like to just have a moment of silence? I want to just stand and, and, uh, and think about our friend who, um, who's left us. That there will be okay. Thank you. Alright, we'll get to item number one, approval of the meeting agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting agenda for this October 4th workshop?
Second.
We got motion from Council Stevens, uh, second from Councilwoman Cresser. Uh, any changes, amendments, or additions? If not, all in favor?
I would like.
The votes? Fair enough. Item two, public input. So if anyone here is from the public that would like to speak, we ask you to stand, uh, up at the podium. Uh, make sure the microphone is on and then state your name and address and your reason for addressing council. Okay. We'll go to item three announcements.
Next council meeting is October 18th, regular meeting at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. Next planning commission meeting is scheduled for October 30th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. Hurrock is scheduled to meet Wednesday, October 25th at 8:00 AM here in council chambers. The borough offices will be closed Monday, October 9th in observance of the Columbus Day holiday. The Halloween Happy Event is scheduled for Tuesday, October 31st at 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM here at the Borough Office. And I wanted to make a note that if you, uh, came in through the front door or drove by, you saw that the Borough Public Works bucket truck. Is out front displaying the Public Power flag. Uh, we are currently in Public Power Week and celebrating that. As we are one of the 35 municipalities in Pennsylvania to own and operate our own electric system. Lindsay has come up with some great ideas to get the community involved and the kids involved this week with coloring contests and that. So. Uh, just wanted to bring everyone's attention that we are currently in Public Power Week and we did pass a resolution at the last meeting honoring that.
Are there any questions? If not, we'll go to item four, reports from our standing committees and the mayor. So first, Budget, Labor, and Finance. Um, just a quick update, we actually started the budgeting process tonight. Um, where as you guys know, we start this process September and start working on our budgets. So more to come on that, but we did start the process. So. Any questions? Not about planning building a zone?
Media is not met, so I might do a report.
Alright. Public safety?
The million, not that's, and then nothing new to report.
Alright, public works and property?
Public Works happened to me on September 13th. I don't know if I gave a report on that yet or not. Uh, but we did go over a number of, uh, items. Mostly, mostly in regards to, uh, project updates for 2023. Um, I know we did discuss briefly, uh, the heritage part and, uh, the status with some of the vegetation. Um. As well as, uh, we brought up the need for, uh, an ADA compliant door in this building, which was not installed during the, uh, initial building of the. Uh, structure. So, uh, it has been suggested that we install an ADA compliant door operator for those that have a hard time. To work. And I don't know if anybody noticed, but we got additional lighting out front to, uh, highlight the signage. And the front of the building so you can see it clearly from, uh, how bad. So they were something that you can discuss. And answer any questions.
So the ADA, that's just on the front door? Do we need, does it mean internally, or is it just only to the entrance?
I believe it's only for the entrance. Um, Steve was in contact with a company that installed them, uh, pretty regularly. So I believe it would just be for. You know, the one with the, uh, they usually have like a handicap sign on them, press, and it just goes to the front door. So I believe it just to the, that's the dual area.
Yeah, the question for Jim? Alright, how about utilities?
Uh, utilities committee has nothing to report since we haven't met recently.
Alright. Hurrock?
Uh, Hurrock, the businesses of the month, I wrote me that doing something different to honor them on a monthly basis. Uh, also the communications subcommittee of Hurrock. As we've been reviewing different examples, communications and social media policies from various other municipalities. So we had an idea as to how we may run the structure of our own upcoming policy. And, uh, we are currently exploring the possibility of replacing tables and chairs that become damaged or to the room for use with our budgetary insurance.
With regard to communications, is there a framework of things you want to address, like in order, like if you wanted to look at social media first or going to look at certain policies? Do we have a structure?
Um, we're going to look initially at the social media aspect because we really have nothing in place for that at this time. We do have some things in place for. Uh, various other types of communication, but the priorities will be social group, Facebook, internet, data, or page, things like that.
Any other questions? If not, Madam Mayor?
I would like to reiterate in the council meetings that I, if anything, um, meeting to Gerard and I attended the Randu Hospital, manual meeting. And, um, I would say that I was very impressed with the hospital they have become. Um, their business model is that they partner with a healthcare system or partner with another hospital. So that they can offer the services of their partners at their brand new location. And they then can remain independent, which I think is very impressive in this day and age to have a hospital that's independent. Um, you can, um, have neurosurgery, you can have robotic surgery there with their partnership with Randu. You can get cardiac services there. And something I did not know is that they are a level two trauma center. So instead of having to be medevac to a city hospital or up north, it's just 10 minutes up 309. So, um, I was very impressed. I was very impressed. Uh, another meeting that, um, I attended was the recycling. Which, um. We got a preliminary figure on the grant amount. So this is for the year 2022. And the total amount, everybody, is $246,000. That is down from the prior year, which was 281,000. Um, from that, we have to deduct down, they have a Pliggett account where they have to keep a minimum, minimum of $90,000. So from that grant, they're going to take off top about, uh, forty some thousand dollars. So now we're down to roughly 200,000. And that will be digging up among the, um, 11 municipalities, the borough. We are, uh, 2.7% of the population of the commission. So that leaves us with about a $5,400 grant. Which is. Really low. Um, the year before it was like 7,000. So it's down that much. Um, for that reason, uh, we've decided to change the, um, consultant who applies for and completes the grant. So starting in 2024, there will be a new, um, Huff Associates. And Huff does a lot of the municipalities. So, um. We're looking to get the money up. So we can continue to, you know, do programs to, like, education and everything. Um, and also, uh, apparently there was a hauler. Who was not picking up trash in a couple of municipalities. And, uh, for that reason, the, uh, DEP started to look at the whole recycling program and look at the different ordinances. And one of the municipalities that's out of compliance with the DEP has an ordinance that's similar to the. Um, commission's ordinance. So that will be reviewed and, um. When it, the review is done, it will be submitted to the DEP to get their approval. And then the different municipalities will be asked to, you know, look at that and adapt the new ordinance. So that, I, I don't have a timeframe on that. But that's something that's coming up. So, um, I'll have to be ready for.
Do we know what the differences would be versus the ordinance we have today?
Um, the big thing I think is it might require that the haulers are registered. I think that's the biggest difference.
Would DEP register DP or register?
Register with the, with the, uh, municipality, right? So we would have a record of, um. Uh, the approved haulers. So, um, the whole thing is. We don't think they're doing things right. So it has to be reviewed, but hopefully by taking these steps. We will increase the grants, get the money up. So here's hoping. Um, and then I am just gonna, uh, announce this. Okay, I received a phone call from the, um. Vice President of Governmental Affairs at Jefferson University, and it was just a courtesy call. He wanted to inform us that apparently there is a children's clinic at Lansdale Hospital. And, um, they are moving it from the Lansdale Hospital to two other locations. So he just did it as a courtesy call. So we're aware of it. I did ask him if he could send me something with the Jefferson letterhead so we can post it on our social media, but I'm still waiting for that. So, um, I just figured I'd announce that at this public meeting that, you know, the children's clinic will be relocated and everyone supposedly should have received the letter statement yet. So. Yeah, that's all I have to report.
Um, two questions for you, Madam Mayor. Um. The recycling issue, does the warrant us read looking at single hauler? Going back and reevaluating that conversation?
It seems that. When you have the single hauler, single hauler, that you get better numbers because, you know. I, I think Salerton has a single hauler and it's messing around. And they. They have no complaints. So, um, that might warrant something like that. I don't know how that would go over here, but. It might in the future, looking at that.
Yeah. I mean, if that drives better recycling numbers and that's part of what we'd have to do to, to be more compliant. As a community, then it's definitely something we should consider. I know we've talked about it in the past, so, but. Okay. Um, and then the trauma center at Randu, how long has that been there?
Um. Could have, I don't know if it opened when they, they opened the pavilion there, that five-story addition.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know whether it came then. And that just happened because, um, Councilman Gerard and I went to that, um, opening there. And that was just sometime in the spring, I think.
Yeah, I think they had a trauma center, uh, before, but it was not a advanced. It was rather limited for how, and this new facility, they've been expanded with facilities. So it's more.
It's a lot of level two.
Level two.
Right.
Uh, I think, think if I'm not mistaken, I think there were three levels. There's one, two, and three. And I think they were three previous, but. Which was rather limited. Now there are two, but they're affiliated with, um, and medicine. So in case of an absolute severe emergency for a particular patient, it can be early, getting out to a level one.
Just curious, because I know I needed, I had to be in a trauma center once and I had to fly down to take a helicopter ride down to Penn for it. So, yeah, so I was curious when that changed. So.
Yeah, I guess it depends on the severity of your injuries, but, you know, level two sounds good to me. So.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Alright, if not, we'll get to item five, reports and correspondence, monthly investment report?
The cash accounts and monthly investment report was included in your packets, uh, through August, as you can see, for capital reserve and, uh, sewer capital reserve. Down for both of those, but sewer managed and electric, uh, um, electric continuing to do significantly well for us. Um, as we had spoke about at the last meeting, when you move to, um, the T bills. Uh, paper, uh, in your packet, the six month for electric manage and the six month for sewer manage. You reinvested those for the 250 and they were both roughly about 5.5, 5.4%. They are going to mature in, uh, late February. So that's where we're at on those. We will keep tracking them. We will also look at the electric 12 month and the electric 24 month. Um, of how they're progressing. I did have a meeting today with Pliggett. Um, the gentleman, the representative came in and we sat down and we had conversations about bank accounts and investments. And he is gathering some information for me that I can share to budget, finance, and labor to see if we want to do something different moving forward in 2024 with any of our other investments. Whether that be at KeyBank or moving into doing something with Pliggett. So he's going to get me those numbers and I'll, we'll talk about it during budget, finance, and labor.
Any questions? How about monthly EIT and LST?
Monthly EIT and LST reports when your packets for the monthly EIT. Year to date, we are at 39794. First last year, we were at 37219. So looking good for EIT. And very similar trending in LST this year. We're at 44314. And last year we were at 36644. Um, again, this is going to be something that's discussed during, uh, the budget season with budget, finance, and labor and council of making some revenue adjustments to show more revenue coming in on those line items in the 2024 budget.
Well done from previous years. Any questions? How about the monthly year to date?
Monthly year to date was in your package through August 31st. As you can see, uh, a big increase in revenues in August. Um, got with Diane this afternoon, talked about that, uh, for the earned income tax in August, we had, um, over $87,000. For real estate taxes, over $18,000. LST was up $10,000. Uh, we did receive our quarterly franchise fee of roughly $4,300 in August. Meter sales were up in August, um, $347,000, uh, total meter sales. And sewer was also up in August, uh, 61,000. So that's where we're seeing higher revenues in August versus, um, you know, previous months, except May seems to stand out as well. Um, as we move where we are, revenues and expenses, almost 50/50, high, a little bit higher revenues than expenses, but we seem to be trending basically even on those two items.
Are there any questions? Uh, there's nothing for zoning hearing board, correct?
Uh, the only thing I wanted to mention, mention for zoning hearing board was there is an appeal for the 103 North Main Street. That was the property that they, it was a single family home. They went to zoning to make it, um, a duplex to families. And zoning hearing board denied that request and the owner has put an appeal. Um, I have provided the information that the zoning hearing board solicitor has asked, and I know that our solicitor has been in contact with them as well. Um, so we can move through that process with them.
It's going to be a matter of briefing and argument. You know, it's all there is. And, and usually the zoning board solicitor will do the main brief. And then Borough Council joins the brief. Because, you know, they sat there and listened to it. So they should know what they're supporting.
And we as council don't have any other opinion or any other, other than what the boards are, the zoning boards are already saying, right?
Let me say this, I entered my appearance because we're allowed to as the municipal government. And in fact. There's some thought that after the Court of Common Pleas level, Norris count, if you end up going any higher, that the municipality has to take over at that point. However, it is possible for you to take a different position. Um, I assume that you would want to support the decision of the zoning hearing board, but if you don't, you know, tell me that and we can write brief opposing it or something like that.
Well, that's kind of what I was just, or, or asking the question. I didn't phrase it correctly, but yes, assuming that we want to stick with, we don't want to dispute the zoning here. Right? So.
Alright, they, you know, if you change your mind, let, let me know that. We'll, we'll take a vote and, and then, uh. And then I can write a, a, a brief saying, ah, we think they made a mistake. But in general, we support their decisions. So.
Okay. Any question? Uh, how about fire or police department?
Well, there's nothing new to add to the report, um, but for a hiring update, we had. This is 140 persons, uh, signed up to take our written exam. They took the exam and have that, 362 people passed. Uh, so we'll be doing the physical agility part of the consortium on October 14th. And assuming that we get 40 people passing that, uh, we interviewed the top 40 and the oral reports of the.
That was 55 or 60% that didn't pass. Is that a normal number?
It's becoming normal. Unfortunately, so, uh, but we are looking to hire for two positions, one of which is Officer Verdict, who was here on September 20th. And the other person's going to be for.
And was there significant reference with the red badges?
The pink.
They're pink? I can't see.
Yes. Breast cancer wearing.
Breast cancer, okay, okay. Sorry, I looked right from here. So if I saw a pink, I would have figured.
Don't let the chief here say that.
Any questions? If not, we'll go on to fire?
There is no specific fire department report in your packets. I will highlight that they are having an open house on October 24th. And if you have any specific questions, um, Butch, as always, is in the audience and would be happy to answer those.
I guess no one else question? I assume it'll be another fun day for the kids, alright? Fun time.
Hopefully, hopefully. So we'll let you put out a fire.
Okay. I could think of some properties you might want to.
We set fires all the time.
Oh, any question? If not EMS?
There was no EMS report in your packets, but I did receive, um, their report this afternoon and wanted to highlight that. Again, they had 17 zone calls, um, in Hatfield Borough out of the 992. We're hovering between the one and 2%. For, um, call response for Hatfield Borough. And, you know, BMSC hasn't made a great presentation to us, uh, about a month and a half ago. That's going to continue to be a conversation through the budget season.
Yeah, I think two of those were in one day. So, because I saw them like an hour, a couple hours apart. So. Alright, any questions? How about public works, Steve?
Uh, so I came a little unprepared because the end of my day was a scramble today. So I don't have my tablet, but. I have a good enough memory. Um, I think last, at the, uh, regular meeting that we had. Um, I think last, at the, uh, regular meeting that we had, we discussed the, uh, poll that had fallen over on Union, uh, Union Street. Um, other than that, it's been a pretty standard month for Public Works, a lot of maintenance equipment, maintenance on equipment. Yeah. Um, that's about it, any, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right, how about our engineering report?
Engineering report was included in your packets, I will highlight for the twenty twenty-three road grade resurfacing project and the twenty twenty-two road grade resurfacing project. We are still waiting on certified payrolls for both of those. Um, those projects are complete, but they haven't turned in their documents for us to be able to make those payments. So we're waiting for that from the contractor. And under miscellaneous and Chad's report, he highlighted the two hundred thousand dollar local, uh, share account. A stormwater study grant that we received with partnership of Hatfield Township. Steve and I attended a kickoff meeting on September nineteenth, uh, with Hatfield Township, uh, Chad was there, Gus was there as well for Hatfield Borough. Along with their engineers, their public works, and their management team. And just trying to come up with targeted ideas of where we see stormwater issues in Hatfield Borough. So whether they were big, small, uh, we are creating a list in-house. If you know of any, or you have spoken to residents in the area who have complained about stormwater, nothing is too small for this list. We're trying to compile, um, just the starting point of where we can move for the future and where we wanna focus these funds, uh, or this feasibility study. So, um, please share your ideas with Steve and I and we will add them to the list.
Well, I don't know if this applies, but what about our neighbor Ted Rogers complaining about?
Right, exactly, yep, he's on, he, he is on the list.
No, no, it's. All right, any questions? How about zoning?
Bob's report was in your package, just highlighting, um, he had three resale inspections, processed, uh, ten permits, which are listed. And, uh, six total new violations. And he had listed, um, what they were, a lot of high grass, um, he did want to mention on Edgewood, the high grass and. Um, old appliances, um, that was resolved. And, um, he noted that on here, same with Columbia Avenue, there were a lot of calls about the mattress in the box spring at the curb for a while, that has been resolved, I told him, I would highlight that.
All right, any questions? How about fire marshal?
There was no report in your packets, though I will highlight that our fire marshal is currently working with the county. And, uh, the nine-one-one system along with the post office of getting addresses for Bennett's Fort. So that's where we are in that process, and I know people have been asking what the street's gonna be called, I communicated that with the fire department. And we're just waiting on addresses for the individual parcels. So once we have that information, that will also be communicated to the fire department and we're, the police, and we're checking with the nine-one-one to make sure there's no issues. If we would name it one oh one Bennett's Fort, there's not another one that could cause an issue in the nine-one-one system. So he has been working on that for us.
Has there been a lot of questions from residents or, uh, what that's gonna be? If that's gonna look like, or?
Um, the development?
Yeah.
Um, most of the questions that have come in were, um, about access to the alleyway, uh, when they were moving, uh, they were doing ENS controls, cutting the. Clear cutting back there a little bit, just making sure that the residents still had access to the alley, um, for parking. That's been the questions that Steve and I kind of have been handling mostly of. And after the first week of them being out there, I haven't received any calls and I don't.
Nope.
So.
And I'm assuming the questions, if it's the alleyway, it's coming from the residents that are there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, just to make sure that they can maintain access.
Yeah.
And we had communicated that, yes, and that was actually part of like the zoning hearing board order that went along with that. Was maintaining access and updating that alleyway. Of course, it would just be like any other road project, if it's being paved at that exact moment, um, there's gonna be a little bit of inconvenience. Um, that would be with any road that was being paved, but they were very understanding. And that was really the only questions we had thus far about that development here.
And we'll send out notices when all that's gonna start happening.
Yes, the developer, uh, promised to be in contact with, I believe, Steve.
Yeah.
And then we were gonna get door knockers out, we also did place door knockers on residents, um, when they were starting to do the ENS controls. Just because we started talking about this project twenty nineteen, kind of finalized it twenty twenty-two. And now here we are, October of twenty twenty-three, and people, and honestly, probably forgot about it. So we just wanted to let them know that there was gonna be movement on the property, people were gonna start working out there, and that seemed to be very well.
Any questions? How about pool advisory?
There was no pool advisory report in your packets.
All right, so we'll go on to item six, the manager's report.
The manager's report was included in your packets, nothing new in land use and development updates. Uh, wanted to highlight for, uh, utility billing, that we're gonna continue to monitor electric and sewer past due accounts. We did have several shut offs in September, and we will have, as of now, several shut offs in October before we go into the winter months. So David and I are working on lists and getting notices out, um, to residents, Lindsay takes care of that. So hopefully, when the notices go out, we'll receive the payment and we can limit the number of shut offs. Uh, wanted to highlight, um, an item of interest that the Indian Valley tastings event is on October twenty-fourth. From five to seven thirty PM at Frankonia Heritage. If you're interested in attending that event, um, always been great, let me know, you or your spouse, um, Hatfield Borough receives tickets. Um, as we are part of the Indian Valley Chamber of Commerce, so, yeah, if you're interested, let me know. We do know that it's the same night as the Hatfield Volunteer Fire Company Open House. I know staff was planning on going to the tastings event and immediately going to the firehouse afterwards, uh, for the resolution presentation. I know Larry was planning on doing the same, so if that's something that you're interested in attending, let me know, and we'll add you to the list and make sure you receive a ticket. Were there any questions about my report?
If not, we'll go to item seven, new business, uh, first item, tax collector letters of interest.
Of those interested in being considered for the open position of the borough tax collector, were asked to submit letters of interest with qualifications. By September twenty-ninth, and I have asked those interested to attend the meeting this evening, so council and mayor were able to ask questions. And any of the candidates were interested in introducing themselves. Uh, we've received one letter from, uh, Marie Snyder, a resident on South Barview Avenue, it is included in your packets. And Marie is in attendance this evening to answer any questions that council might have.
I'm gonna let her off that easy, huh? Yeah. So Marie, why don't you tell us why you're interested in doing?
Um, good evening, um. That's good. Hit the button and when it turns green, it's on. Please, yeah.
Pull the mic down, see if you're.
Good evening, um, the reason why I applied is that I'm a numbers person. And, um, I'm also, uh, been in this community for decades. We moved here from upstate the summer before I went to first grade at EBL. And I have lived in the borough ever since, and I still reside in the borough. So I have vested interest in the borough, I enjoy. Not watching the changes that the borough makes, I know people from when I was a little girl that are still around. And yet, there's many new people that I meet. Um, I do have a background in bookkeeping, I worked for, um, one bulk commodities carrier. For twelve years and saw them go from one truck to thirteen in a matter of a few years. And I handled all the payables and the receivables and the general ledger. And all the taxes and the insurances and everything else. Um, I also worked for, um, Bucksmont Refuge. Um, until they closed and were taken in with waste management when I transferred up there. And then I went to work for an oversized overweight carrier, who traveled across the whole United States. And, um, both the trucking companies were multimillion dollar companies, and I did all the accounting. So, um, that's, you know, my background, if you have any specific questions you'd like to ask me.
Oh, Marie.
Yeah.
Um, you wouldn't have any problems meeting the, um, hours of the job for the heavy collection fines?
Oh, no.
No, you would be.
Uh, I, I'm absolutely available, um, I did find a link where I could read the, um, tax collector manual online. And so I reviewed it before I submitted my application, cause I wanted to know more about, uh, more about it. Besides like the, the, the bookkeeping part. And I do realize that, um, the, the tax collector has to have certain hours. And basically, according to the manual, they're mostly in the, um, like the discount period. Uh, my feelings after reading that was that there should be publicized and said hours in all three periods, the discount period. The on-time period and the penalty phase. I think that it's important for someone to be here during those phases, because people will come in and pay and they like to have it. Like a stamped and signed receipt, and that's an important part of the business. And, uh, I also found out that I need to take classes, and I don't have a problem with that, and I need to be bonded, and that's fine with me too.
Those are the other questions I had, so. It sounds like you've done your homework, which is awesome.
I, I wanted to know what I, I wanted to know what it was about before I sent a letter of intent.
I have one question for you, Marie, uh, what do you feel? Other than what you just mentioned about being here for the people, what do you feel is the most important part of that particular position?
Um. Ta- taxes is one of the most, um, expensive part of some families' budget. And they really need to be handled, um, timely, I. Um, and currently, after retiring from bookkeeping, working part-time at the Charlie Stop Deli. Um, I went to work there for Mr. McGinn in the seventies, and I often worked two jobs, my full-time job and work still for him. I enjoy that contact with the people, um, the Charlie Stop is a hub of community gossip. And the one thing that I've listened to people say is that. They come here and they pay their taxes, some, um, during, you know, in full sums, either during the three periods. Or on coupons, you know, paying monthly, and their main concern seems to be that their monies aren't deposited timely. I personally feel that any monies collected should be deposited at least once a week. I don't think you can let people's money sit here until the periods, you know, the due dates come on. I think they need, I think voicemails need to be checked timely, and I think all checks need to be deposited timely. It's the only way people can keep track of their monies, especially senior citizens.
Good cash management.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
So what would be your next steps?
Um, you still have a little time. Yeah. I think we have to do it at the, I'm looking for the reunion, right, we have to do about the October regular meeting. So you could see if anybody else applies, or you could just vote for, wait, um, the applicant tonight. Or you could do it as a regular meeting, whatever you want. But you have to do it within thirty days, and I think the regular meetings within thirty days will trigger that.
Well, part of my thought is no one else has applied, deadlines passed, should we give people more time, or should we go ahead and. And appoint Marie tonight? I'm okay with appointing her tonight.
They certainly do then, because it's on your agenda, it's not as an action, but it's on your agenda to consider, uh, applicants. So I think, I think it's would be okay to do that, we get to the, you know, voting portion of the meeting. That's good, a good question for the managers, when does she get sworn in? I'm sure we could get a district justice or regular justice to come here at our regular meeting to swear her in. And try to have some family members with her, something like that, so. But actually, if you voted tonight, that would make it a lot easier to get that.
I'll call Judge Levine and, and, you know, or, I'll see if they're available, um. The mayor is also allowed to swear people in, so, um, but I will call Judge Levine and see if he's available if, uh, she is appointed this evening. And I will be in contact with my.
And, and actually, the decision's vacant right now, so it'd be great to get somebody to take it over.
And, yeah, in conversations with the previous tax collector, he's willing to work with whoever's appointed and spend some time. We talked about a transition going through probably most of the rest of this year. And then the, the replacement would be at full-time on their own, starting in January, so. So that would give a couple of months for the training and the courses you have to take and the transition through this, so, yeah. My only ask would be is one of the things we planned on doing with Mohammed was, was after he'd been in a role for a year or so, is to come to give council kind of a. Synopsis of all the, the duties and tasks and things, because tax collector, whether it's this municipality or others, is kind of. This nebulous thing that happens that no one really knows all the details of, so getting some of that, I think, would help educate us and the, and the public even. Uh, so that would be my only ask, is after you've been for a year, that you would, you know, have a talk with us to kind of go through of everything that's involved in the role, so. If that's okay, so. But I don't have a problem adding on to action items, item D, a motion to, uh, appoint Marie Snyder as the, as the tax collector. For the remainder of Mohammed's term, is that correct, right?
That is correct.
What did I say, so? All right, if there are no more questions, we'll go to item B, Comcast pole attachment agreement.
They don't handle that. Um, you, you, uh, probably remember this, we, we have had the, uh, the Comcast franchise agreement for a long time. And we've been through the public hearings and done all that. But, but because we own our own poles, they also owe us money for attaching their equipment to our poles. And, uh, Jamie and I tag teaming it, we're able to get that number up from twenty-five thousand to sixty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So I think it helped that we actually, um, waited on the Comcast franchise agreement. Because they started asking, where is it, where is it? And then the guy who was helping us do the pole attachment agreement was able to come up with more money and. And it's fair, because we're charging them what we charge other people who use our poles, twenty-five dollars a pole. The only thing is that, um, Comcast uses a lot of poles, and that would be ten years at once. In other words, they're paying their whole, their whole amount at one time. So the pole attachment agreement says that they're responsible for their equipment and we're responsible for the pole. And for the privilege of putting their equipment on our pole, they're going to pay us in a lump sum, uh, twenty-five dollars a pole. Or a total of sixty-three thousand dollars to attach, that's, that's the whole agreement.
And to be clear, so that was sixty-three up from what would have been twenty, well, one term, having twenty-five.
Correct, it's sixty-three thousand, two fifty, what was twenty, twenty-five thousand. It's ten years, we keep it settled, is a good, it's a good increase.
Good job, Matt. All right, any questions? If not, we'll go to IMC, resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, the Comcast franchise agreement.
Right, you should all be familiar with this, because we have been looking at this, this is the agreement that was negotiated by the consortium lawyer. We had a lawyer represented all, all of the communities, or most of them, in Montgomery County. And, uh, he came up with an agreement and, um, it's pretty much the same, there's certain service requirements. Uh, people start coming in and complaining that Comcast isn't living up to its obligations that we can then, um. Complain to them as the borough, you know, it could, it helped our, our customers, people who live here. So it's basically a franchise agreement, when we had the public hearing, which we advertised, nobody showed up. So I'll have those who are happy enough, where they're not Comcast people. There's no game and there are no, you haven't gotten any complaints recently, have you? There's no game and there are no problems, you have got any complaints recently, have you?
No, the only, the only, um, comment that I had was, um, from a resident we've spoken about previously. That just wanted to make sure, um, that all the marbles were in Comcast hands. And that we would be able to hold Comcast responsible for, you know, customer complaints or if they weren't, um, you know. Holding up to the end of their bargain and the way that both, uh, the Kohan Law Group and ours listener had said in a previous meeting was that. Yes, this agreement allows us to do that. Like, yes, they have the right as Comcast to try to work it out themselves with the customer. But we have the right to ultimately hold them responsible.
Right. I would say there's one thing the Cohen group, uh, did, uh, I thought was pretty good. They defined better the revenue, so they were paying the franchise chain now separately.
I think you've read this several times.
We've been discussing publicly several times.
Alright, any question? If not, we'll go to item B, resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, the PennDOT's, uh, winter services agreement.
Resolution twenty twenty-three sixteen, uh, outlines the PennDOT, uh, winter services agreement. And authorized is Borough Council President Jason Ferguson to sign that agreement. Uh, PennDOT notified municipalities that they were considering, uh, amending the agreement to offer an increase in the rate per snow lean. They felt that, um, a lot of municipalities, as well as everybody, was dealing with, um, economic conditions and difficulties. And maybe their rates weren't reflective of that. So, uh, the new rate increase, um, goes from what it used to be was a one thousand, two hundred, forty-six dollars and fourteen cents. Up to one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and that is reflected in the agreement. And, um, once we sign the agreement, if it is approved this evening, I will pour that over to PennDOT. And that will, um, take place starting this year for this, this winter agreement. So it looks, you know, a little bit of a two hundred dollar increase for snow lane and I know that doesn't seem a lot, but it's a lot for Hatfield Borough, considering we don't have a lot of. You know, lane mileage.
And the other reason that this is a good deal for us, you know, to do the streets anyway, to get to our streets. You know, it's nice that they're willing to pay us, but otherwise, I don't see how you could plow the residential streets if you didn't plow the state streets.
I'm sure we get a lot of questions.
Plenty, plenty of other municipalities do it. Plow their own streets and not the state roads.
Not here in Hatfield. Hatfield, our reputation has always been that the, after they're plowed, the streets are still white. Because they're sweet, but it's all everything.
Alright, any questions? Alright, if not, we'll go on to item eight, old business. Nothing in the packet, but.
I don't have any.
I think Comcast qualifies as old business.
I don't know, we should put a standard out there. We've read it three times when that's considered. Alright, if there's nothing else, we'll go on to the action item portion of our meeting. We'll start with the first action item, a motion to consider authorizing. The execution of the poll attachment agreement between the Borough of Hatfield and Comcast Southeastern Pennsylvania LLC.
Second.
There's a motion from Councilman Stevens, a second from Councilman Gerard. Any additional questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Item B, motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, authorizing the execution of the cable franchise agreement between the Borough of Hatfield. And Comcast of Southeastern Pennsylvania LLC. I can motion from Councilman Stevens, a second from Councilwoman Cresser. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none. Item C, motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, authorizing the execution of the winter maintenance service agreement between the Borough of Hatfield. And the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, i.e. PennDOT.
Second.
They have a motion from Councilman Gerard, a second from Councilwoman Cresser. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion for passing. Alright, item D, motion to consider the appointment of Marie Snyder as her tax collector to finish out the term from Mohammed. I got a motion from Councilwoman Cresser, a second from Councilman Stevens. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Congratulations, Marie.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Now you know you're gonna have to run in two years, right?
Yes, I know.
Alright. Um, do we have an executive session today?
Yes, just to discuss one litigation matter.
Alright, can I get a motion to adjourn for executive session, discuss personnel litigation and real estate issue?
Second.
I got a motion from Councilwoman Cresser, a second from Councilwoman, Councilman Bagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. We are adjourned.